Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, June 2nd, 2022. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Counselor Cuddy is just running a couple of minutes late. He let us know he will be here in a minute. Counselor Kent?
Yes, I mean here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
And Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in plaid?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
And if you remain standing for a moment of silence, prayer will be lectured. Thank you. Please be seated. Mayor Quill, all the announcements, if any?
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a few announcements. As everybody knows, we're getting closer to the official start of summer. We've kind of walked into it already, and a sure sign of it coming is tomorrow night is the first opening night for the summer season for the Auburn Double Days, June 3rd, 7:00 PM down at Falcon Park, to kick off the Double Day season. And then we have some upcoming events from our City's Parks Department. The first concert of the summer is going to be on Friday, June 10th, 7:00 PM till 10:00 PM, and it's going to be on top of the downtown parking garage with the band The Arcade. It's an 80s cover band, and that'll kick things off for concerts and such for the summer season for the City Parks and Recreation Department. Also, next week on Friday, June 10th, downtown at 3:00 PM at the Ecorey Heritage Center, we will be having a dedication ceremony for two National Boats for Women Trail historical markers that are going to be placed in Auburn. The National Historical, National Boats for Women Trail Historical Marker Program is a program of 250 of these markers nationwide, which celebrate and educate on the topic of women's suffrage. And two of these markers will be placed in the downtown Auburn, and there'll be a ceremony next week, Friday afternoon, 3:00 PM over at the Ecorey Heritage Center, open to the public. And that's all I have for now, Mayor. No, just, I'll read that in. Proclamation from the Office of Mayor Quill for Pride Month, whereas the City of Auburn is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas Auburn recognizes the importance of equality and freedom that our nation was founded upon, it is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal and each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Whereas the City of Auburn's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are a vital part of our community. And whereas among the many heroic and historic stories of New York State's history featured within the exhibition at the Ecorey Heritage Center is that of the June 1969 where the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in New York City is attributed to be the catalyst for the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender rights movement. And whereas upon the 53rd anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, the official theme for 2022 is unapologetically "Us." As the world begins to emerge from a pandemic that gave society a full reset and forced everyone to reconsider and reprioritize their lives, we are acknowledging the struggle and resilience of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every American, but on the 53rd anniversary of the Stonewall Inn uprising, Auburn continues to advance the pride movement, and we are a stronger community as a result. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, joined by the members of Auburn City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Auburn, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month in the City of Auburn. Mayor, earlier this week, I attended a meeting on Tuesday night of the Pride Organizing Committee for some of the events that'll be happening. I just let everybody know dates for some of the events. On Saturday, June 11th, 8:00 PM in the evening, there will be a comedian show with the comedian Flame Monroe at the Auburn Public Theater. And then on Saturday, June 25th, in downtown Auburn at noon, there will be a Pride Rally at the Exchange Street Plaza. And then on Wednesday, June 29th, 7:00 PM in the evening at the Westminster Church on 17 William Street in Auburn, will be an interfaith pride celebration led by the Reverend Harry. So those are the Pride events, and we'll be promoting and educating the public about those for the month of June. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Public, or first public to be heard?
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard. A portion of the council meeting, residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this point, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Very well. We will have a second public to be heard at the end of our meeting, or near the end of our meeting.
May 12th.
For meeting minutes from May 12th of this year. We have a sponsor. Discussion, correction, conclusions, call them all.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
And Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Next week, on Wednesday and Thursday, several city staff members will be attending a NICOM conference in the City of Syracuse related to community revitalization. And our Assistant Corporation Counsel, Nate Garland, is actually going to be presenting on some of the unique things that we've attempted here in our experiences. So that'll be interesting, a good opportunity to get a little attention for the City of Auburn over there at the NICOM Conference. This past week, or this week, staff submitted two grants that we previously talked about here in meetings, FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grants. So those are submitted, and we'll be waiting on how we fare with those. This afternoon, several staff members from the City of Auburn, excuse me, as well as SITA and Counselor Kent, went through and worked on scoring 54 ARPA Small Business Grant applications. So that process is still ongoing. We did make it through 54 of those grant applications. Luckily, Julia and the SITA staff have done a great job collecting the information we needed and doing some preliminary work on those things. So over the next couple of weeks, hopefully that process rolls out and we are able to announce the recipients of those grants. And with that, the next round will be ARPA Human Services Grant applications. That formalizing that whole application process is just wrapping up, and we expect those things will be out and in circulation, available for different organizations to apply for by the end of the month, probably sooner than that. And the last couple of things, this week there was a lot of work being done on the Genesee Street Hill. There's been some street closures in that area and street restrictions. Those are going to continue more than likely for another week or so. While the Water Department continues to make various hookups to the buildings along Genesee Street. And the other thing that is probably a little bit more visible in some ways to folks is State Street. And the area of the State Street Plaza has been shut down this week, as Jenny Haines had mentioned last week. They're doing multiple aspects of the project and the street restoration and things down there. So the street has been completely closed off. Work is progressing pretty quickly. We do have some difficulties with some of the businesses in that area as far as providing access along, at the same time as trying to repower sidewalks and things like that. But the contractor actually went to great lengths today, and if you get a chance this weekend to walk down through there, we have a nice little wooden plank roadway going down through there for pedestrian public to be able to make their way down through State Street safely, and still allow for work on the concrete. That work is continuing. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Do you want myself, the council, to walk the plank? I might understand that.
Skates, roller skates, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter. Reports from members of council? Council Resolution Number 59 of 2022, approving revised rules and regulations for plumbing and drainage within the City of Auburn. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution 59 of 2022, whereas Article 4 of the New York State General City Law provides for the establishment of a plumbing board within the city, which is comprised of five members, including the Plumbing Inspector for the city, the Director of Municipal Utilities, two master plumbers, and one journeyman plumber. And whereas Article 4 of the General City's law states that such board may formulate a code of rules regulating the work of plumbing within the city, and from time to time, add to, amend, or alter the same. And whereas the existing rules and regulations for plumbing and drainage within the City of Auburn became effective on January 19, 2010, and were last revised on May 8, 2012. Whereas the plumbing board now proposes to revise Sections 43 and 45A of the existing rules and regulations for plumbing and drainage within the City of Auburn, which revisions are attached here to and incorporated herein. And whereas the revisions to Section 43 and 45A are in compliance with Article 4 of the General City Law, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the rules and regulations for plumbing and drainage within the City of Auburn as revised. Be it further resolved, the City Clerk shall post the rules and regulations to the city's website. Be it further resolved, the rules and regulations for plumbing and drainage within the City of Auburn shall take effect on June 2nd, 2022.
Discussion, Counselor, Counselor Genetino?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mr. Jensen and Mr. Sluker here, if we could just get a brief overview of what these changes entail?
Good evening, everybody. We're making changes to the rules and regulations about not having licensed plumbers here in the city. We only have a very select few, and a couple gentlemen that were on the board previously didn't live inside the city, so we had to remove them from the board. So we wanted to change the verbiage of the code to say that if they have a business inside the city, if their business is on our tax roll, then they would be eligible to be a member on the board. So we're just looking to get more bodies in there. Currently, right now, myself, Mr. Jensen, and we have one other master plumber that lives in the city is on the board. So we just need to widen the horizons on that. That was the first change that we were going to do. And then the second change is when a master plumber passes away, the old verbiage said that there was going to be two years that somebody could work off their license. We wanted to lower that to one year, so that nobody can, you know, work off that gentleman's license. One year would be, we think, is a significant time where the court can take over, you know, if the business has to be dissolved or whatever, and, you know, the farming out of the license doesn't happen. So those are the two changes that we were looking to do.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else, Counselor?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Agreement Resolution Number 60 of 2022, authorizing agreement for the Auburn YMCA WEIU for the operation of the Casey Park Pool. We have a sponsor.
Agreement Resolution 60 of 2022, whereas since 2009, the city and the Auburn YMCA WEIU have worked together to provide services at the Casey Park Pool during the summer seasons. And whereas this year, the City of Auburn and the YMCA would like to enter into a new proposed agreement for the 2022 summer season pursuant to the terms of the agreement which is attached here to and incorporated herein. Whereas under the agreement, the YMCA will provide services, staffing, and programming for the operation of the pool at a cost of $53,500, and the city will continue to supply pool chemicals and maintain the pool and premises. And whereas the term of the operation of the Casey Park Pool will run for eight weeks, beginning Wednesday, July 6th, and through Sunday, August 28th, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the attached agreement between the city and the Auburn YMCA WEIU, and shall pay for the services provided, the sum of $53,500 for the term of the agreement. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to finalize the contract.
Mr. Dieter, anything you'd like to add in regards to this?
I don't have anything, Mayor. This is very similar to what we've done in the past, and the YMCA is assured that they have the appropriate staff and are ready to get going.
Counselors?
Will we continue to waive the fee for swimming at the pool?
I don't know where that stands right now, and if Mr. Talbott has got that.
Are we continuing to waive the fee for swimming at the pool?
Yes, for city residents, yes.
All right, thank you.
And for YMCA members.
Thank you.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Watching news program this morning, they were talking about lifeguards in Los Angeles. Did you hear that? The amount of money they make was right out of this world. It was just probably, I swore it was in hundreds of thousands of dollars for a salary. And with the cost of living in California, I can understand why, but how do the taxpayers pay for that? I have no idea. And that, I'd like to do that here, but we can't, so that's a fact. I'll never hope, fair enough. Award Resolution Number 61 of 2022, awarding a bid for the 2022 CDBG Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk Replacement Program. We have a sponsor. Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Kent.
Award Resolution 61 of 2022, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk Replacement Program provides for new sidewalks and/or curbing installation in targeted areas of the city which are so designated. And whereas the areas for this year's construction are as follows, Case Avenue and Chase Street. And whereas, as part of this year's program, the city will also review the condition of existing street trees that are adjacent to the sidewalks slated for replacement, and trees that are found to be diseased, in decline, and/or dead will be removed and replaced. Whereas on May 24th, 2022, bids for the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Replacement Program were opened, and the following bid was received, One Concrete Slipform Incorporated of Canistoga, New York, $137,817.50. Whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council award the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Replacement Program contract to the lowest qualified bidder, which is Concrete Slipform Incorporated, in the amount of $137,817.50, contingent upon the city receiving an executed fiscal year 2022 contract from the United States Department of HUD. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Auburn City Council does hereby award the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Replacement Program contract to Concrete Slipform, the lowest qualified bidder, in the amount of $137,817.50. Cost of the project is to be charged to this Community Development Account, CD 8672-2210-2022. Be it further resolved, the grant award is contingent upon the City of Auburn receiving an executed fiscal year 2022 contract from the United States Department of HUD. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents.
Discussion, Counselors?
Just one thing for Mr. Lupien. Yes, Counselor? I know it's difficult, but can we try not to get all the sidewalks tore out, like in June, and not get them done until September? If there's ways that we can remove and get them back in in a timely, it'd be great. Okay. I mean, like I said, I know it's hard, but if we can just remind them a little bit. Don't open the whole city up without, you know. Thank you.
Anything further, Counselor?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Agreement Resolution Number 62 of 2022, authorizing change order number one for the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Program. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Kent.
Agreement Resolution 62 of 2022, whereas on June 2nd, 2022, the Auburn City Council passed an award resolution for the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Program in the bid amount of $137,817.50, which provides sidewalk replacement in designated CDBG areas of the city. And whereas in order to maximize the $165,000 program in the 2022-23 Annual CDBG Action Plan for sidewalk and curb installation, which must be spent in this year's construction season, change order number one, in the amount of $27,182.50 to Concrete Slipform Incorporated for the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Program is now requested. Whereas the cost of resolution is to be charged to the Community Development Account, CD 8672-2210-2022. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby award change order one in the amount of $27,182.50 to Concrete Slipform for additional work to be done within the 2022 CDBG Sidewalk Program. Be it further resolved, the cost of resolution is to be charged to the CD Account, 8672-2210-2022. And be it further resolved, the award is contingent upon the City of Auburn receiving the executed CDBG contract from the United States Department of HUD. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents.
Discussion, Counselors?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Budget Resol-, start again. Budget Resolution Number 63 of 2022, adopting the 2022-2023 City of Auburn Consolidated Fee Schedule. We have a sponsor. Counselor Cuddy?
Budget Resolution 63 of 2022, whereas the Auburn City Council annually adopts the consolidated fee schedule in June of each year. And whereas the city manager and department heads have reviewed the consolidated fee schedule, it had determined that certain modifications need to be made. And whereas the consolidated fee schedule attached here to and incorporated herein is proposed for adoption for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby adopt the consolidated fee schedule attached here to for the fiscal year 2022-23.
Discussion, Counselors?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Budget Resolution Number 64 of 2022, adopting the City of Auburn Budget for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023. We have a sponsor.
Budget Resolution 64 of 2022, whereas the city manager has presented to the city council a final proposed budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year, which encompasses the various funds of the city. Whereas a public hearing on this final budget was duly held on May 19th, 2022. And whereas the city council wishes to adopt said recommended budget, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Auburn, New York, does hereby, one, adopt the 2022-23 General Fund Budget in the amount of $43,462,530, with the amount of $13,445,102 to be raised by property taxes based upon the 2022-23 taxable assessed valuation of $1,249,71,000. Did I get that right? $246. I thought I was reading my bank account for a minute. Yeah, don't anguish. Which will produce a tax rate of 10.764079 per 1,000 of taxable assessed valuation. And two, adopts the 2022-23 bid levy in the amount of $128,97 to be raised by special district taxes based upon the 2022-23 taxable assessed valuation of $59,502,47, which will produce a tax rate of 2.152816 per 1,000 of taxable assessed valuation within the Business Improvement District. Three, adopts the 2022-23 Power Utility Fund Budget in the amount of $1,308,623. Four, adopts 2022-23 Combined Solid Waste Fund Budget in the amount of $3,627,500. Five, adopts the 2022-23 Water Fund Budget in the amount of $6,103,714. And six, adopts the 2022-23 Sewer Fund Budget in the amount of $8,258,000. Thanks, Mayor.
If there's questions, our cap controllers here to answer any detailed questions we may have.
Counselors?
I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. Again, I'd like to thank the city manager and the department heads for producing this budget to us. Requires a lot of work every year. You know, as I've said before, I think this is a fiscally and operationally responsible budget. It allows us to maintain the level of service that the people of Auburn depend upon every day. It also allows us to expand those services in some ways. We've talked multiple times this budget cycle, we're going to add some positions to the DPW to address our parks. A position to maintain and oversee our police body camera program, which is a necessity. We're able to do all this during double-digit inflation and see the tax rate go down 14%. And I just want to thank the entire city organization for the work that they do day in and day out that this budget pays for, because that's what this budget does. It provides those services, funds those services for the people of Auburn. Thank you.
I'd like, I agree with everything you said, you've stated, Counselor, and so I keep having bad memories of budgets passed. Mr. Lupien will bear that out. It's great to have a professional manager, professional staff, department heads that want to work, that live in our community, pay taxes in this community. They want to supply the services that are requested, but it's a tough balancing act for them, so it's a lot of hard work composing this budget, working through this budget. But our staff is second to none. Everyone's aware of all the issues, and very proud to be a part of this. A very little part, but very proud to be a part of it. So thank you for all your hard work. No further discussion. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry it.
Thank you. Agreement Resolution Number 65 of 2022, authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn and Auburn Congressional Firefighters Local 1446. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy. Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution Sixty-five of two thousand twenty-two, whereas on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the current collective bargaining agreement, buy-in between the city of Auburn and the union representing the Auburn Professional Firefighters Local fourteen forty-six will expire. And whereas the city of Auburn and the union representing Auburn Professional Firefighters Local fourteen forty-six have engaged in extensive negotiations in order to reach a new collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, which sets forth all of the terms, conditions, and obligations of the parties and is attached here too and incorporated herein. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council has reviewed the terms of a collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, between the city and the Auburn Professional Firefighters Local fourteen forty-six, and does hereby approve that agreement, which is attached here too and incorporated herein. Be it further resolved, the mayor, city manager, corporation counsel, comptroller, and fire chief are hereby authorized to sign the agreement.
Discussion, Counselors? Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's interesting and fitting that these two collective bargaining agreements are on the same note as the budget, because that's what the budget pays for, is our staff, to do the work and to provide the services that we just talked about, that the people of Auburn depend upon. You know, I was reviewing the city manager's year-end review that he provided earlier in the year, and I was looking at a slide for Auburn Fire Department. Seventy-eight hundred calls last year. They were responsible for COVID vaccinations, not only in the city of Auburn, but in Quga County. I would dare to say that if our fire department didn't take that on, the vaccination rate in this county would be much lower than it is. They also helped with COVID testing. You know, the importance of a paid fire department. In the last two weeks, there's been three severe structured fires in the city, one on West Genesee Street, two on Gaylord Street, right next door to each other. Counselor LaCastro made a comment to me, we're lucky the whole block didn't go up. And my response to him was, that's why we have a paid fire department. So I plan on supporting this agreement. And again, I'd like to thank city manager, corporation counsel, and the members of the union for negotiating good faith, for working with one another. I think it's important that our staff throughout the organization knows that we appreciate them and value them, and I think this contract shows that. I also think it shows that the members of the fire department appreciate and care about the city as well and the residents of the city. So again, I plan on supporting this contract. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Call the hall. Or, or, nothing, whatever.
No, again, we've got two contracts before you this evening, one for police, one for fire. And typically what we do is we start contract negotiations six months prior to the end of, or the expiration of any of the collective bargaining agreements. And we see it all around, the situation with workforce. We've been dealing with workforce issues ourselves, just like the private sector has. The dynamic out there currently in the workforce is much different than it's been in the past. I've been involved with contract negotiations on one side or the other for twenty-seven years. We've seen a lot of things, but the workforce situation, the labor force situation is totally different than it has ever been. And we keep a good eye on what's going on across the state, what's going on across the country to identify trends and.
Nothing further, Counselors? Please call the hall. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number Sixty-six of twenty twenty-two, authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Auburn and the New York Finger Lakes Region Police Officers Local number one ninety-five and Council eighty-two. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution Sixty-six, two thousand twenty-two, whereas on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the current collective bargaining agreement, buy-in between the city and the union representing the New York Finger Lakes Region Police Officers Local one ninety-five, will expire. And whereas the city of Auburn and the New York Finger Lakes Region Police Officers Local one ninety-five have engaged in extensive negotiations in order to reach a new collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, which sets forth all of the terms, conditions, and obligations of the parties and is attached here too and incorporated herein. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council has reviewed the terms of a collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, between the city and the New York Finger Lakes Region Police Officers Local one ninety-five, which is attached here too and incorporated herein, and does hereby approve the agreement. Be it further resolved, the mayor, city manager, corporation counsel, comptroller, and police chief are hereby authorized to sign the agreement.
Discussion, Counselor Genatino.
Thank you, Mayor. Much like I did with fire department, I did the same thing with the police department. I just want to reiterate, you know, thirty-three thousand calls for service in the previous year. Oftentimes, police department find residents in the most vulnerable of states, you know, in those thirty-three thousand calls for service, fifteen hundred domestics, two hundred and twenty-two overdoses. Again, I plan on supporting this contract as well. I want to thank them for their service to the people of Auburn. I also want to thank the staff, like I did with the previous contract, for negotiating with the police union in good faith and continuing to build that relationship between the city employees and city leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Diger, I do, I'm reasonably assured that this is going to pass. I'd be surprised at this point if it doesn't. But a big part of negotiations is faith and trust on each side. And to have two labor agreements between police and fire and the city of Auburn, along with a terrific budget, it shows a lot of hard work, compassion, and trust in each other. And that's more important than anything else. So I do want to take a moment to thank you and remember your staff for your hard work that's well deserved. We'll have you, we expect you back to work tomorrow morning, but tonight, and the two chiefs are here with us, so thank you very much for your hard work. Thank you.
Call the hall, please. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number Sixty-seven of twenty twenty-two, appointing members to the Auburn Historic Resources Review Board. We have a sponsor. Counsel Kent, second by Counselor Castro.
Agreement Resolution Sixty-seven of two thousand twenty-two, whereas the Auburn City Code, Chapter one seventy-eight, entitled Historic Preservation, was established to protect the many structures and landscape features having special character or historic interest to the city of Auburn, and has declared as a matter of public policy that the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and use of improvements and/or landscape features of special character or history be preserved as a public necessity and required in the interest and welfare of the people of Auburn. And whereas Section one seventy-eight four of the Auburn City Code requires that members of the Historic Resources Review Board be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, whereas there are currently two vacancies on the board. Whereas it is recommended the following persons be appointed for three-year terms, Tracy Verrier, city of Auburn resident, for a term to commence immediately and last through June first, two thousand twenty-five, and Mitch Menicia, city of Auburn resident, for a term to commence July first, two thousand twenty-two, and last through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Auburn that the following persons be appointed to the Historic Resources Review Board for three terms, three years terms of service as listed above, Tracy Verrier and Mitch Menicia. Be it further resolved, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Please call the hall. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Do we have any people other than, they have under present? Other business for the council? Counsel Cuddy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So last week I mentioned that when Dr. Aikman was at the podium for Public to be Heard, he was interested in the council looking at some memorializing resolution that would go to our U.S. senators, our representatives from New York State about common sense, trying to pass common sense gun legislation. So I just wanted to let you know that he has written a rough draft, which I will share with the council. I want to read it and put my, you know, insight in there as well as bring it here next week just to review. And then, and obviously, the city manager mentioned that, you know, corporation counsel and police chief to review it. And then hopefully, if it's something that we can all agree on, once it is agreed upon, we could bring that forth the following week in a work session meeting or an official voting meeting. So I just wanted to let you, give you a timeline on that. So, does that sound good?
However you want it distributed to members of council.
Yes, I can, it'll be, yeah, I mean, obviously, email or, I'll bring it to the meeting next week. But again, I think it's in line with some of the, I know President Biden is going to be speaking tonight. It's in line with a lot of the discussion that's been happening around recent events, so.
Any input from the major council? Please keep moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there any public to be heard? Is there anyone else desired to be heard this evening? Is there any public to be heard? Very well. Mr. Diger, do you have requests for executive session?
Do not, Mayor.
Entertaining motion to adjourn? Counsel Cuddy? Second by Counsel Kent. I can't believe this, that might be going on a budget, labor negotiations, forty-five minutes. I don't want to change ourselves, but.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.